When you like Ventura TV Appliance on Facebook, it's nice. But when you love the Samsung big screen we deliver, it's even better. Our website is cool, and it's a good place to start. But you really should touch the merchandise before you buy. Time for that upgrade to an HD 3D web-enabled Samsung TV. Get the best selection, price, and service in town without waiting. Come into Ventura TV Appliance and touch the merchandise today.
Hi, I'm John Malice. Welcome to this live edition of Connect with Me on the showroom floor at Ventura TV on this day. It's a Tuesday morning, and today we're going to be talking about that nine-year-old girl shot. She was an innocent victim on Sunday night. We'll also talk about water rates. Those are the two topics today here on Connect with Me. 436 ME TV, option 11. A sitting city councilman is in the house today. Back in just a moment. Back here on the program today, live on the showroom floor. Of course, you're watching us as usual, Monday through Friday, live at 10 o'clock on Comcast Channel 187 and 43.6, and of course, now 13.1. Later in the day, you can watch us on 1360 YouTube at 2:00 in the afternoon, and 8:00 again, it replays on 13.5 Biz TV. I want to get right to the focus of our program today. We have a sitting city councilman in the building today, talking about this very tragic story. It's the story that's going to make your blood boil, and it makes me wonder what kind of world we live in right now. Punks, thugs, cowards, that's exactly what they are. I want to put a picture up on the screen and show you exactly what I'm talking about. A very disturbing story. You're looking at nine-year-old Janessa Ramirez of Fresno, shot and killed on Sunday night by a stray bullet that traveled some 300 yards away. Police believe rival gang bangers got into a shootout near Marks and Clinton, where the young girl was about to go into a convenience store to cash in some lottery tickets with her mom. An innocent victim Ramirez was hit in front of the store. She died about an hour later at the hospital. She was a fourth-grade student at Steinbeck Elementary School in Fresno. Fresno Police Chief Jerry Dyer was visibly shaken at a news conference yesterday. Asked anyone who knows anything to come forward. Dyer said his officers are searching through some 20 surveillance videos owned by businesses around the area to see if they could pick up a tip or a lead. There's a $5,000 reward, and you can remain anonymous by calling 498-STOP. That's the Crime Stoppers number. Or you can call Fresno Police Department at 621-2000. Live in our studio today is Fresno City Councilman Steve Brandau to talk about this issue and some other issues on the table like water rates. Say, did you mail your card in? But first and foremost, this little nine-year-old girl, Janessa Ramirez. 436 ME TV, option 11. Our hearts, our thoughts, and our prayers go out to the Ramirez family. We're back with our program. We've got an open line, a caller calling in already. Back in just a moment. Back here on the program, we do have an open line. 436 ME TV, option 11. And that poor little girl, Steve Brandau, is here. I appreciate you coming on the program. Good to see you again.
Good to be back, John.
Yeah, just a very disturbing story. 436 ME TV, option 11. If you have seen anything, you are to call 498-STOP. That's the Crime Stoppers number, or 621-2000. That's Fresno PD. We'll put the picture up again of the little girl because it's just, you know, if it were my kids, Steve, I would be suicidal, I have to admit.
Agreed.
It's just an awful story. Is this reflective of what's going on in the city of Fresno to a certain extent?
You know, I want to say no. I'm unsure right now. I've been listening to the chief talk about gang increasing, gang problems increasing in the last couple of months. And I know about three weeks ago, the Gang Intervention Task Force really hit the streets hard and did a big roundup. And I think they were very successful. So I'd been thinking things are going better. I hope this is not an indicator that we've slipped backward.
Yeah, I hope not. The little girl's name is Janessa Ramirez. She's a nine-year-old, goes to Steinbeck Elementary School. Her family visibly shaken and upset. We saw yesterday, all over, it was all over Twitter, Facebook, all over the news, the newspaper. It's one of the biggest stories in the Central Valley right now. How an innocent girl like this can be shot, that could happen to you or me.
Yeah, well, this one, so apparently she was just an innocent bystander in a little strip mall, talking with relatives, and a bullet hit her. And that is such a tragedy. That's why we need to, in my opinion, John, we can't come down hard enough on these type of crimes. And so we need to, I think, vamp up, revamp efforts again. I think the chief is going to do that. I saw him interviewed. He's visibly moved by this crime, and he's taken it serious, so.
Yeah, are you in constant communication with Fresno PD and the police chief?
No, not really. In many ways, I don't know much more than the average citizen in our city. So I get my news reports by listening to shows like yours and the Fresno Bee and other sources. So every once in a while, at council, we'll get updated on something. And I'm hoping the chief will stop by and talk to us about this as well.
Yeah, you know, it's really alarming to see around the country, including here in the city of Fresno and anywhere in California, protests against police.
Yeah.
Yet we don't protest against crimes that are happening in our own neighborhoods, crimes like this one that affect real families.
Yeah, in my group of Facebook friends, you know, I have thousands of Facebook friends over the years. And I started seeing this protesting the police stuff popping up and coming across my news feed. Whenever I saw that, I just unfriended people. I can't take, I don't understand why with our society the way it is, some segments are choosing to protest the police. I don't get it, and I'm not going to be a part of that.
Right, city councilman Steve Brandau is here. And, you know, if you have any information about this case, if you were anywhere near the area of Clinton and Marks on Sunday night, and, you know, know anything, have seen anything. I know police, Steve, are searching through all these videotapes throughout that part of the area. You know, businesses that had video cameras. Any, you know, if anybody could call in with any kind of a lead, it would help, right? I would assume.
Yeah, and John, somebody watching your show or watching us right now might have that lead. So I would just encourage, if you know anything about this tragedy, if you could call Fresno Police Department and just tell them what you know, and let them take it from there. This is an innocent child, and it's unacceptable.
Yeah, there is a $5,000 reward. You can remain anonymous. Is this going to take somebody with courage and guts to call in?
I hope so, but you know, when you think about it, John, everybody is connected to children, their own children, their grandchildren, nieces, nephews. And I think, I'm hoping that when people realize that an innocent child's life has been taken, they'll do the right thing and begin to help the police department solve this crime.
Yeah, we got a call coming in now. Do you want to take it? Good morning, caller, you're on the air on Connect with Me. What's your question? Hello?
My question is, like, you know, you talk about how they did a gang sweep and cleared the streets.
Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead. Hey, caller, you got to turn down.
Okay, they did a gang sweep. But how many of these people actually get locked up or stay in jail? And it's like a revolving door. They don't care.
Yeah, that's true. That's a good, that's a good comment. Steve, Prop 47 is a classic example of that. You can go ahead and turn that off, please.
Yeah, so, well, two different things. Last year, we got hit with prison realignment. That's where Governor Brown sent state prisoners into our local jail systems. And I think that's what the caller's talking about. So that leaves a lot less room for our local criminals when we do catch them. We've got state prisoners filling up those jail spots. So that is a problem. And then with the passage of Prop 47 this last November, we're seeing a huge increase in burglaries because, in all reality, felonies have been demoted to misdemeanors. And so the police are not hauling in as many criminals as they have in the past. And somebody that's capable of breaking in somebody's house and stealing something might fully be capable of random gang violence, like we see in this tragedy.
Yeah, and if you're breaking into someone's home now, or a business, let's say, it's now a misdemeanor. It's no longer a felony. And you think that's affecting the way police conduct business? Do you think that's affecting crime in the city of Fresno from what you've seen?
Yeah, well, actually, I know that it has. You mentioned Chief Dyer. I spoke with him last week. We've seen a 26% increase in property crimes and automobile burglaries. So we are seeing, and that's just since November.
That's a big jump.
Yeah, that's huge. And I think, I think people are realizing, I'm hearing more and more about it from the citizens that I represent in Northwest Fresno. So it's definitely moving up. Now, whether that has a direct correlation to this type of crime, I'm not sure. I'd have to let the chief talk about that. But, you know, at the end of the day, criminals are criminals. And when they see us not treating it as seriously when it comes to locking them up and putting them away, that probably encourages them to some extent.
Yeah, okay, we're talking with Steve Brandau. I got to take a break here. A lot more to talk about on Connect with Me. We're going to talk a little bit more about this and then get to the water rates. Of course, that's coming up here on February the 5th, the deadline. But if you have any information, I want to put up the little girl's picture one more time. Any information about Janessa Ramirez, nine-years-old, Steinbeck Elementary School student, killed, shot and killed innocently on Sunday night. My God, it just makes your blood boil. We ought to crack down hard. And if anyone out there has the courage, the guts to call police at 498-STOP or 621-2000. If you know anything, have any information, can give police a lead, call in. If you do call in here at 436 ME TV, option 11, please turn down your sound because it's kind of rough when you're trying to listen to us and then trying to listen to your TV set at the same time. So turn down the sound on your TV. Hey, we're back with our guest in just a moment. Stay tuned.
The Ballot of Andy and Barney. Andy and Barney were lawmen, bravest you ever did see. One never crook in the record book to stay out of Mayberry. They were the law, and they didn't know fear.
The Andy Griffith Show.
I guess to sum it up, you could say there's three reasons why there's a little crime in Mayberry. There's Andy, and there's me, and baby makes three.
Frigidaire. We introduce the first home freezer. The first pulsator agitator washer. And now we introduce the Frigidaire Orbit Clean Dishwasher, designed with a unique wash arm that gives you four times more water coverage for a consistently better clean. Frigidaire, over 90 years of legendary innovation. See the full line of Frigidaire appliances at Ventura TV Electronics and Appliances.
Attention all units. We have reports of two motorcycle cops protecting California's highway.
That's for us, good buddy.
The men of CHIPS are on ME TV.
Hi, I'm John Baker.
I'm John Baker.
He's Officer Baker.
He's the blonde one.
Hi there.
I'm Frank Ponchero, man.
Frank Ponchero.
Well, I'm Frank Ponchero.
And he's the one who's Eric Estrada.
There's no way I wouldn't remember a name like that.
Catch the blonde one and the one who's Eric Estrada.
Now on ME TV Fresno, Xfinity 187. Frigidaire. We introduce the first home freezer. The first pulsator agitator washer. And now we introduce the Frigidaire Orbit Clean Dishwasher, designed with a unique wash arm that gives you four times more water coverage for a consistently better clean. Frigidaire, over 90 years of legendary innovation. See the full line of Frigidaire appliances at Ventura TV Electronics and Appliances.
Steve Brandau is here. He's a city councilman here in the city of Fresno. We're talking about this nine-year-old girl just a little bit here on the program today. Had not scheduled to talk about crime or anything else, but since the tragedy happened on Sunday night, put up the picture of the little girl just one more time here, and then we'll move on. She's nine-year-old Janessa Ramirez of Fresno, shot and killed by a coward. A, that's the only thing I can say because it outrages everybody, Steve, to say anything other than, and like Jerry Dyer said yesterday, these people are cowards. They're not going to come forward and admit anything.
Yeah, I don't think we can expect people to come turn themselves in, even though you wish they would. Even though you wish they were living with so much guilt right now over this tragedy of killing this young little girl, that they would say, you know what, I made a big mistake and I turned myself in. That would take a heroic effort, and I would applaud somebody if they did that. But, you know, I don't think that's going to happen. I think it's going to take the community helping the police on this one.
Yeah, it brings it home for all of us because many of us do have kids. And if you have any information, have the courage to pick up that telephone and call 498-STOP. That's the Crime Stoppers number. Or just call Fresno Police directly at 621-2000 and then just listen to what number you have to punch on the screen if you have any information. I'm sure that not only the Ramirez family, but those of us here in the city of Fresno would be very grateful for any kind of information. Let's move on now. Let's talk about the water rates, and you should have received the cards in the mail. I want to put up a picture of Mark Standriff. He is the Communications Director for the city of Fresno. Any questions for him regarding this, call 621-8000. Or you can call the recording and get information at 621-8618. The mail-ins, you should have received these by now. I've actually talked to a few people here in the city of Fresno, said, you know, I haven't received mine yet. That's what it looked like. They mailed it, unfortunately mailed it during the holidays when people are getting all kinds of mail from everywhere. So hopefully it didn't get lost in the shuffle. That's what it looks like. So the card that comes with it on the inside, those are the water rates. That's the water rate plan. But there's a card that comes with it. You're supposed to check that box and then sign it. If you do not want your water rates to go up, and then you have to mail it in, and it has to be inside the city clerk's office by February the 5th. No later than and no exceptions. You can't mail it on the 5th. It has to be in City Hall by the 5th. The question of the day for us today here on the program, we'll put that up on the screen as well. Have you mailed back your protest ballot to City Hall? It's a very simple question. Many of you have received one, maybe two, maybe even three of those in the mail. And the suggestion is from City Hall and including Standriff, who's been on this program, hasn't been on recently, though hard to get a hold of, Mark is. Anyway, mail all three of them back if that's your pleasure. They're going to count in some way, shape, or form. So Steve Brandau, of course, is here. He's the city councilman who held this news conference last week, saying that you are going to abstain from any kind of vote if it comes to that on the 5th of February. Steve, I want to ask you why?
Yeah, John, this began several weeks ago. I started talking to citizens in Northwest Fresno that I represent.
District?
District 2.
2.
And so I'm the councilman from District 2.
Okay.
And as this vote approaches in the first week of February, I thought, you know, I need to get a better pulse of what my citizens are thinking. So I started knocking on doors, very old school. I went out in the evenings and on a Saturday and started knocking on doors. And what I was hearing at the doorstep gave me pause. And really what I was hearing was somewhat of what I personally believe myself, which is, Steve, I understand we need this water infrastructure. I mean, we need to provide safe water for our citizens, but it's very expensive. And I don't know if I can afford my rates to double in five years. So I would sit there at the doorstep, and sometimes I'd talk with somebody for two minutes, and sometimes it'd be 15 minutes. But I was trying to get the pulse of how people are viewing this. And some people would mention that they turned in their protest. Others thought, no, I think, I saw a real mixed bag, but a lot of concern about the price tag.
How long was the survey? How long did you conduct your own personal survey door-to-door?
You know, really, prior to my press conference, about a week. But I've gone out a day or two since my press conference from last Thursday. And I want to, and I'm going to go out this Saturday. And I'm even going to, I'm going to do more of that between now and February. So, well, that's a different thing. But in all reality, I'm hired to represent the citizens in District 2.
So most you've talked to are against higher rates?
No, I would say it's, I would say it's probably evenly split.
You know, we have a graphic, I'm sorry. We have a graphic of those water rates. And let's put them up, worth $429 million, the current rate. You know, these are, these are all average figures. It's not exact to a T. So right now, you're paying roughly 24 bucks a month, let's say. Okay, year one, it would go up to 28, then 34, and so on. And in the fifth year, it would end up to like $52 a year. So for a lot of people with fixed incomes, and I know Northwest Fresno, you have kind of an upper-middle class there. So some of these people are not on fixed incomes. They're still working and maybe getting raises. But for those other people in Fresno that are on fixed incomes, it can be a real hardship.
Yeah, and so actually, at my press conference, I acknowledged that. If I'm getting this at the door in Northwest Fresno, I can only imagine what other areas of town are like. So it's very important to me. I mean, I do represent Northwest Fresno, but my votes, my votes affect everybody in the city. So it's very important how I take that vote. So John, the impetus of that press conference was I want to make sure we've done everything we can do. And now, this project started over a year ago, well over a year ago, like 18 months ago, we took our first vote. But the truth is, in this last November, the citizens of the state of California passed a water bond, $7.5 billion.
Correct, which surprised me, by the way.
Right, but it actually passed very easily.
Yeah.
And so my question now is, that's a game changer to me.
How so?
Well, $7.5 billion for water infrastructure. And here we have a $429 million plan. I want to know if our plan, our project here in Fresno, can apply and appeal to some of that money.
So your question is, how much of that $7 billion are we going to get?
Yes.
And can we apply it to this water treatment plant out there on the east side?
Absolutely, and if we can, those rate increases that you just shown, they can be reduced. And everybody comes out a winner. The state, the state wants water infrastructure. The city of Fresno has a project ready to go. And if we can get some help from the state, we can reduce those rates on our citizens. So this vote was supposed to take place in February, first week of February. And I'm saying, you know what, until I hear from the state, I'm not, I myself am not going to vote on it. Now, they could, they could still hold that vote in February if they want to. I won't participate. But I think that I raised some good questions that our other council members would now are also interested in hearing the answers to.
All right, you're not going to participate in any kind of vote. Are you urging people to mail in those mailers?
You know, I'm urging people to do whatever they want to do. That's the way democracy works. I myself am supportive of the plan. And the rates that you showed, within five years, they would double. Person's rates will double.
Are you in favor of those rates?
I'm in favor, well, if I was in favor of those rates, I would not have held that press conference. I held that press conference.
Obviously, you're not in favor of those rates because you're abstaining from voting. You're not in favor of those rates because you, what you're saying is, and correct me if I'm wrong, only you know what you're saying, but we do have a phone call. I'm going to take this call. But you're basically saying, let's explore other options as to where we can get other money from.
Yes, and it's not too late in the game. So at that press conference, I called on our state legislators. They need to get in, and they represent Fresno as well, and we need to hear from them.
Caller, you're on the air with Steve Brandau. Go ahead.
Yes, I just want to make two points. One, you know, there's obviously a need to maintain our water lines and so forth. I, we're going to have to pay for it in some way, I'm sure, with, we'll try to get our state and federal governments to help pay for it. But, you know, it's going to take such a long time to do it. The cost of our maintenance of our water lines is going to be ever increasing as it goes along. I mean, a stretch of water line I saw being replaced from Marks Avenue all the way to Blackstone along Ashland, took about six months just for that segment to be completed. And I'm thinking, you know, for us to see an entire city be maintained, you're talking about, I mean, I'll be dead and buried. And I'm 25 years old. I'll be dead and buried by the time you get halfway done with it. You know, I mean, I don't see it ever happening. You can talk about getting water or getting bonding money for, say, the, you know, a water plant or something out in southwest Fresno. And I don't see how that's going to, you know, you can get more water with that treatment plant. But in terms of getting it dispersed into the different areas of the city, that's never going to happen because, again, you don't have the maintained water lines to do it. And so I think people just don't understand that. Another point I'd like to make to Mr. Brandau is, I know I read in the paper you were going to not vote on the issue until the mayor, you know, sought every avenue of getting money. And I think that's a mistake on your part. And that is because, you, like you said, you represent the people of Northwest Fresno. And to not vote on it is to make all of their beliefs and their wants irrelevant because their voices aren't being heard. So in essence, if you're not going to make your own point be heard, at least vote on it and let theirs be heard. That would be my, my point to you, sir.
Okay, thank you very much for being at least respectful to our councilman here. I appreciate that. You can respond to that.
Yeah, a lot of people look, John, at when you abstain from a vote. And I've never done it yet. I've been a councilman two years. I've never abstained from anything.
Yeah.
But people look at it like, well, you're just taking the easy way out. But the truth is.
Have some people said that to you already?
Well, like this caller. I think that's what he's implying, that I should, you know, face the vote.
You're taking the easy way out, yeah.
Right, but the truth is, John, I'm actually not taking a way out. I'm supportive of this project, but I'm demanding that we look underneath every rock. And by me bringing this forward in a press conference last week, that's my only way to put pressure upon our city government and our state legislatures to help us. Now, if I, if I didn't do that, we could easily take this vote. But then I would have to look at my residents in the eye and say, I wish I could have done more, and I don't want to say that.
Maybe that caller's suggesting if you're against the plan, perhaps you should vote no instead of abstaining.
Well, that's, I didn't hear that, but here's the thing. I'm not against the plan.
Do you think he was implying that, or?
I don't, I don't think so. I think he's just saying that, maybe, maybe he was. Maybe he's thinking that the citizens in District 2. But that's not what I'm hearing. I'm not hearing a rejection of this plan. What I'm hearing is, we need the infrastructure, councilman, but this is very expensive. So I'm trying, I'm listening. The people are saying that we need water infrastructure. We've got a city of a half a million people. And one thing I do disagree with the last caller on is, we'll get this thing built. And inside of the $429 million includes those new pipes that he was talking about.
Right, and the water treatment.
And the water treatment.
And the 2035 plan. That's all part of the expansion out there on the east side. That's why the water plant is there. And see, it's, we have another call, and then we got to go to break. Good morning, caller. What's your question for Steve Brandau, please?
Yeah, I need to ask him a question. Okay, Northwest Fresno and Northeast Fresno, and that's a rich section of Fresno?
Well, it's upper-middle class.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, why are we giving water to LA from our reservoirs? And why, we're, we're dry and they're nice and wet?
You know, so to this caller, I would say that that is way outside the pay grade of a Fresno city councilman, right? So those decisions, unfortunately, are made in Sacramento. And I did, and I agree with the sentiment that this caller's expressing. And I've been supportive of building Temperance Flat Dam and some of these other projects.
Right, why is LA getting water from the Colorado River? Why is the Bay Area getting water from Hetch Hetchy that's 90% full? And we're, and the farmers are stuck bone dry?
Yeah, yeah, that's almost criminal. That's a, that's a whole nother show.
That's a criminal thing, I mean, to me.
Let me say how I could tie in this sentiment with the city of Fresno.
Yeah.
All of, all of us are paying for water, John. And it gets delivered from both Pine Flat and Millerton, right? We come in, we get sources from both.
Surface water, yeah.
But do you know that we can't grab that water? We don't have the ability to grab that water right now. So we pay for it, and then we turn it back over into the system. It gets sent off for somebody else to use. And so this surface water treatment plant would put an end to that. This would grab the water that we're paying. This would grab the water that we're paying for and put it into circulation. So, there's a lot of good things that happen with this plan.
Steve Brandow is our guest, 436 MeTV, option 11. Hey, the question of the day is, what have you turned in your mailers to City Hall? They're due by February the 5th. If you mail back your protest ballot to City Hall, my friends, you should do so. They have to have it by February the 5th if you're against those water rates going up. 436 MeTV, option 11. Remember to try to turn down the sound when you call in, we're back in just a moment.
It's almost time.
Now, we'll find out once and for all about Clark Kent Superman.
Look, up in the sky, it's a bird, it's a plane, it's a TV show!
Yes, but who is he? What's his name?
He's Superman!
Golly, Clark, won't that be wonderful, seeing Superman?
Fighting a never-ending battle for truth, justice, and television the MeTV way!
No one can do the things that Superman does!
The adventures of Superman!
Now on MeTV Fresno, Xfinity 187.
This fall, there is a place, familiar and inviting, timeless and warm. MeTV, a place all your own, that you can call home.
Hi, honey, I'm home.
This fall, home is where you'll find me.
You mean to tell me that's all there is to it?
That's all.
MeTV Fresno, Channel 43.6 and Xfinity 187.
I am not going to vote on this project in three weeks when it's scheduled for a vote. It will cost our ratepayers a lot of money. I'm prepared to exhaust every monetary avenue out there to bring relief to the city of Fresno with this project.
Hey, so that was a news conference held by city councilman Steve Brandow last Thursday. And so, did you get some immediate reaction from not only your colleagues on the council, but from outside?
Yeah, I did, actually, I actually had made calls to our state legislators prior to that. Because I knew I was going to include them, and I was going to name names and ask for their help. So, I wanted to let them know that. I didn't want to blindside anybody, but then immediately...
Like who, Jim Patterson?
Yeah, like Assemblyman Jim Patterson, Assemblyman Henry T. Perea, who helped write the water bond. So, I said, Assemblyman, can you help the city of Fresno? You represent the city, you helped write the bond, and here's a project that could be applied. And, and he, he said, Steve, you're on the right track. There is money in the bond to help the city of Fresno.
Wow.
And so, I also reached out to our two state senators, Vidal and Berryhill, that represent Fresno. And then I also humbly asked our mayor, you know, she's got a good friendship with the governor. I asked our mayor, Mayor, use that friendship to help the city of Fresno.
Get some of that bond money.
Yeah, get some of that money.
And I, and I want to do, I also do want to play the response from Mayor Ashley Swearingen to Steve's news conference.
Think that Councilmember Brandow will be satisfied that we will have exhausted every option and will have factored in what we know we can count on from state low-interest loan funds before we bring the rate plan to the council for a vote. Could be looking at pretty serious restrictions on water use if we don't move forward with our water, our water program.
Okay, that was the mayor of Fresno, Ashley Swearingen. And Steve, we do have a call. Caller, go ahead, you're on the air.
Hi, thanks for having me on. I just have some questions. We passed the bonds, one and two. I'm from Tulare County, and it affects all of us here in the San Joaquin Valley. The caller that made the comment about water to LA is valid. That water is being diverted to LA to sustain them instead of us and our farmers that need it. The smelts are getting part of our water. San Francisco's getting water that they don't even have to pay for. LA doesn't have, they don't have to regulate their water, they don't have a plan, they don't have any, anything as far as, you know, trying to stop our drought. So, we're stuck here in the San Joaquin Valley, left high and dry. And all the money coming from those bonds, I read them all, one and two, is to affect all of us. And why isn't any of that money even being directed towards your, you know, your sustaining of your pipes and your, you know, getting any pumps and water and cleaning up your water or anything else? That's what those bonds were for. We had all these bonds passed, and we've passed, gosh, eight years for billions of dollars. I want to know where all that money has gone, and nothing, nothing has been done, not even one hit has been done.
All right, let me understand.
So, if you could maybe explain that to me, and I believe that you need to vote, you don't need to hedge.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
And the callers are correct, we need you.
Thank you very much for the call, I appreciate it. Want to respond?
Yeah, I think, well, for starters, the wheels of government turn slowly, we know that.
You found that out, huh?
Yeah, and we find that out. So, this water bond just passed in November, and so what, and it's got some folders of money that are preset for certain types of projects. And there's been several of them that I've identified, and Assemblyman Perea has helped me identify a couple more, that, that this water project that we're talking about, the surface water treatment plant, could apply to. For instance, drought relief, okay, and groundwater recharge, both of those things, this project would help with in the future. You know, John...
How would it help with surface water?
Well, okay, so, if we, if our 500,000 citizens start using surface water instead of groundwater, which we currently using, then that groundwater will begin to slowly recharge, right? That's a regional benefit, John, that helps the city.
But there hasn't been enough surface water, there's not enough surface water. It hasn't rained in four years, but, go ahead.
Yeah, there's still...
Because of the storage issue, and that's obviously a major issue that people are debating all the time. How much should we store? How much should we let downstream because of the Delta smelt and the salmon run?
And so, you've had two callers that have talked about that. You know this storm that we had three and a half weeks ago?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Did you read that report out? It dumped over a trillion gallons of water under the state of California in the Sierras, right? But there it goes, out to sea.
Yeah.
And so...
Isn't that crazy?
It is crazy, and that's why we're recognizing that the whole state is behind on infrastructure. Indeed, it's really the whole nation. And it's not just water infrastructure, but this drought is highlighting how far behind we are.
Okay, so, you, we already established, at least you told us, that you're against these high water rates. You don't like the fact that people are going to be playing double or triple in five years. And you're going to abstain from, from voting on the 5th if it comes to that. Will the mayor be able to persuade you to change your mind, to take a vote yes?
No, I'm not going to change my mind until I've heard something from the state of California. Now, I don't know what that could be.
And the mayor won't be able to change her mind?
No, she can't change my mind on this.
Nobody will, huh? Not even John Mallow's?
No, 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 I'm fighting, I'm fighting for 72,000 residents in Northwest Fresno. And I've got to do my best for them. And so, I'm not, until I hear the answers to my questions, I can't, I can't participate.
Okay, fair enough. Caller, you're on the air, go ahead.
Yes, I just wanted to ask Mr. Brandow, you know, we, we're, the city's having difficulty paying off the bonds that we're already owed. We have the $15 million bond that we used with the Metropolitan Museum. We have the multi-million dollar bond that we use for the stadium. And, and as you see, every year that we come down trying to have a new budget, you know, it's always, the city's always burdened with trying to pay off those bonds every year. You want to have now a over $400 million water bond. How is that going to affect the city's resources in terms of trying to pay off that bond as they go along and trying to implement that water bond?
That's not a...
Would we deplete our police? Would we deplete our fire? And our other resources like parks and so forth?
That's not a city bond, that's a state bond, it's worth $7 billion, I believe, isn't it?
Yeah, so to this caller, I'm, I'm fully aware of what he's talking about. That's why I'm trying to go outside of our pool of money to a bigger pool of money.
State money.
Yeah, state money. And, and it's, and it's not just that I want to shift it on to somebody else, but the state of California is saying, we want water infrastructure. And, and I'm saying, well, we're, we're part of the people paying for the state bond, let's use some of that money here locally and bring relief to our citizens so that our bond, which this caller's talking about, won't be so big.
Let me ask you if you have any insight to what the other council members will do if it comes to a vote. Steve Brandow, you've already said you're going to abstain. Clint Olivier has indicated he is going to vote against the water rates. Am I right about that? Has indicated, not for sure, but perhaps indicated?
He's voted against them in the past, and so maybe that's what he's referring to.
Okay, and no telling what he'll do on the 5th, though?
And no telling. And, and John, it's, I can't, the truth is, and I don't know how many of your listeners and watchers understand this, but I don't get a chance to really talk to those other councilmen, that's illegal. So, I can only talk to two of them, it's called the Brown Act. And so, I can only talk to two of them, so I'm not going to have the answers on how all these guys feel. The only things that I, I get a little hints, like I know that Clint voted against it the first time. So, that's a hint.
So, he's, maybe he's on the fence, you don't know.
Could be on the fence.
And Oliver Baines could be on the fence, Quintero voted for it last time, so he could be on the fence, too, you never know. Esmeralda's new on the council. Hard telling, I mean, she, when she's, she's been here before, three times on this program, seems to me like she was leaning against water rate hikes, but I don't know.
And, and I don't know, she's one that I haven't had a chance to talk to, and I can't. But she, I think what I heard from, on the campaign trail, is that she was kind of against it out there.
Yeah, that's what I've heard, too.
But you know what, John? Now that she's a council member, she's going to hear a lot of more detailed information, and it could change her mind as well.
Yeah, I'm sure you know that, because, you know, average citizen to boom, sitting city council member, all of a sudden, you're being fed so much information, how much can you actually absorb at one time? Paul Capriolio, seems like he's in favor of the water rates, and Lee Brand wants to run for mayor in 2016, so we'll see. He's in favor of the water rates, too. So, this thing could end up in a 3-3 tie, you don't know.
Right.
And then what happens?
And would that be something? Then all the pressure comes back on me. But you know what?
I know, and then what do you do?
Yeah, I've already made my decision, John. For me, I need to hear that we've done everything we can do. Once I know that we've done everything we can do, then I'm going to vote on it. I'm not going to, I'm not running from this vote. I'm using my, just like these protest ballots that you've mentioned, I'm using my opportunity to protest and say, let's, let's put a check on this. If it takes an extra month, let's make sure we get it right.
At least you're being strong in your convictions, and you've got to be well-respected for that, I appreciate that. Anyway, Steve Brandow, city council member in District Number Two, you can weigh in today, like many others, have 436 MeTV, option 11. Hey, this February 5th deadline is inching closer and closer, and the question we have for you is, have you mailed back your protest ballot to City Hall? Hey, a question that we're going to answer, if you didn't receive one of these ballots, who do I call? We'll ask Steve Brandow on the other side of the break, back in a moment.
Spinner's Records, the valley's classic vinyl headquarters. Carries an inventory of over a half million classic LPs. Shoes from rock, rhythm and blues, country, jazz, and oldies but goodies. Spinner's also buys and sells fully restored, old-school stereo gear and LPs. You can now get a turntable receiver and speakers for below $250. We carry name brands like Morantz, Sansui, and Pioneer.
At Spinner's, we sell memories.
Spinner's Records at 639 East Dolly Avenue in the Tower District.
A top-secret location. It's the spies who love me, bringing together MeTV's top super spies to fight evil at a memorable moment's notice. They're dairy. That's right, free.
Now, what are we going to do?
The best we can.
Swag.
Does that apply to me, Oscar?
Possibly.
And smart?
The old finger in the gun trick.
Maxwell Smart.
MeTV Fresno, Channel 43.6 and Xfinity 187.
All right, back here on the program, question of the day is, have you mailed in your ballot, your protest ballot? That's our question of the day. And Steve, I got to ask you, if you haven't received one, and you're on City Water meters, you live in the city of Fresno, you didn't receive that ballot and mail, what do you do?
Well, that's really easy. You can come down to City Hall, I mean, almost everybody knows where that big building is sitting, and you walk in, and you can, on the second floor is the clerk's office, and you can go in and talk to the clerk and just simply request, as soon as you walk in the doors, it's to the left, and you can simply request another one of those ballots. So, a lot of people, so it's important to know, John, I know that you went over those ballots in the beginning, they are being mailed out to every resident, and if they're a renter, they'll get a ballot. If they're the homeowner for a certain piece of property, they'll get the ballot. So, it, so, we might have more than one ballot per piece of property, but only one will be counted.
Oh, okay, all right.
Yeah, it's whoever's footing the bill. So, sometimes it's a renter, and sometimes it's an owner, and so, yeah.
All right, and as I understand it, they need more than 50% of those people that are on Water meters, which adds up to about 66,000 ballots, and I understand they have about 34,000 to 35,000, according to George Hostetler of Fresno Bee.
I read that.
On Sunday, so I guess that's pretty accurate.
Yeah, I think, now, I don't know, I haven't checked in down at the city, but I'm assuming that he got his information correct when he went down there, and so that's...
Knowing George, he got it right.
Yeah, you know, that's, that's not a small number to me. You know, it's not, it's not like, I mean, that's it, that shows that some residents are concerned.
You think they'll reach the 66,000, or no?
George also said in that article that it's, the numbers are starting, it's starting to taper off. So, they've already, if they, if they were at 34,000 now, they may, it's hard for me to say.
Like predicting who's going to win the Super Bowl.
Right, exactly.
Hey, you got an email question there?
Yes, I did.
Go ahead.
It asked, how does your guest feel about the proposal to enlarge San Luis Reservoir instead of building Temperance Flat? I have been spending so much time on our local project that I don't know that much about enlarging San Luis Reservoir. But just reading the question for the very first time, I'm a big proponent, and I'm very much in favor of Temperance Flat. I believe...
Storage, you want storage, don't you?
Yeah, I want water storage, and I want it right here where we know that it's close by to us, and it can be used by our farmers and, and also by the city of Fresno.
As you know, Doug Vegum has fought the city on these water rates for many months now, and he struck a deal with the city. But then, we had these water forums, I want to roll some B-roll of these water forums and talk over this a little bit. There were like three or four forums. Were these really necessary, and what came out of them, in your opinion? Was there anything accomplished with these water forums that, that we saw across the city here last year?
So, I only went to a couple of them, and, and the reason is, is I'd already, I already knew the information being shared at the forums, being presented. So, the ones that I went to, I saw many of the same people that always come to everything. And matter of fact, some of the, most of the same people that I see at council meetings. So, you know, we have a small group of people that really care passionately, and they came out to those forums.
Were they against the water rate hikes?
I think it was like everything, John, on this, we're seeing a mixed bag. I think people realize we need water, but you know, it's a lot of money. So, that was expressed at the doorstep, it was expressed at the forums. I wish more people would have come out to those forums so that we had more informed citizens.
Yeah, Doug Vegum has basically fought tooth and nail against the city. Do you agree with what he's, what he's done, what he's tried to accomplish and, and tried to help the residents of the city of Fresno?
You know, I consider Doug a friend, and so, and I've had a good relationship with him over the years. On, on this issue, I disagree with him. And, and sometimes, the things that he's brought up, on, as, as arguments, on one day, two months later, the whole argument has changed. And so, he's kind of been all over the place on this one, we've heard a lot from him. And so, he's kind of been all over the place on this one, we've heard a lot from him.
But one thing he's been steady on is against water rates going up.
Well, yeah, but that's not a, yeah, but that's, just to be against something is not a valid reason not to do it. I need valid reasons why this is not a good idea.
Well, he basically says that the 2035 plan, which you opposed, right? The 2035 plan?
Yeah, yes, I did.
You voted against it?
Yes, I did.
Doug says, and we got a phone call, so I can't expand on this too much, but he basically says that money that they want to take, that water treatment plant, the 2035 plan, they want to expand the east side, it's like 17 to 21 square miles. It goes east out towards Sanger, and it's a land grab and it's a money grab by the city. That's what Doug says. Would you agree with that?
Definitely not.
Okay, you wouldn't because?
Uh-uh. So, this has been one of Doug's main arguments from the beginning, was that this surface water treatment plant is all about future development and future growth.
That's his claim.
Yeah, that's his claim. In Sega, right? Well, the truth is, this general plan moves away from Sega. Sega's almost under lock and key. Sega won't probably be built for 20 years, maybe more, John. So, so to say that we're building a surface water treatment plant for a section that won't be built for 20 years from now, it's really inaccurate. This plant is needed currently, of course. We need, we've, we're gonna face growth. People don't stop having babies. We're gonna face growth. We have to plan for that. But this surface water treatment plant is not about future growth, it's about-
It's about now.
-meeting the needs of now.
Caller, are you there? Go ahead.
Yes, ma'am. How, what are you doing currently for new development in order to save water? I mean, are, are you looking at landscape requirements? Are you looking at use of great wa, water? And why not put on a moratorium if you don't have enough water? I mean, you don't want to pay for it. You know, there's, there's so many things you can do. I'll take my answer up here. Bye.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so there were, and I remember even at one of these water forums that you just showed a clip of, some people were yelling for a moratorium on construction. If we don't have the water, let's not build any more homes. You know, that is, that's, to the ear, that might sound like a solution, but the truth is, John, those people, there's not gonna be a, they'll just move to neighborhoods right outside of Fresno. They'll go to Clovis, they'll go to Sanger.
Fowler.
Madera's gonna build a brand-new city.
Yeah.
You know, they're gonna, they're gonna move all over the place. People are not gonna start, stop building homes, having babies, and we are not gonna stop growth just by saying we're gonna have a moratorium in Fresno. What'll happen is, all of the middle-class people will end up moving elsewhere, and we'll be stuck with this even more severe poverty issue.
We gotta take a quick break. Steve Brandau is here, city councilman from District Two. The question of the day is, have you mailed in your protest vote? Because it's due by February the 5th. If you don't want your water rates to go up, mail them in. If you don't care, don't worry about it. We're back in just a moment.
When you like Ventura TV Appliance on Facebook, it's nice. But when you love the Samsung big screen we deliver, it's even better. Our website is cool, and it's a good place to start. But you really should touch the merchandise before you buy. Time for that upgrade to an HD/3D web-enabled Samsung TV. Get the best selection, price, and service in town without waiting. Come into Ventura TV Appliance and touch the merchandise today.
Back here on the program with Steve Brandau, our city councilman, in our remaining moments here with about eight minutes left. And so, Steve, you were against the 2035 plan. I saw your op-ed piece in the Fresno Bee. Very well-written and very interesting. But it also created a stir of controversy.
Is it?
You know that, you saw some of the comments in the Bee.
I meant to.
Yeah, you meant to stir the pot a little bit, right?
Yes, I did, you have to.
All right, here's one of the statements that you made, and I'm quoting here from the Fresno Bee from the op-ed piece. It says, "It is now popular in California for public policy to be made on the whimsical notions of the intellectual elite. They live off high-six-figure salaries and have less common sense than the average worker at Walmart."
Yeah.
You want to explain what you meant by that?
Yeah, absolutely. I was at a League of Cities meeting this summer in August in Los Angeles, and where they do planning for the state of California. And this is where they're pushing onto the cities their vision for California. And the keynote speaker said, "With glee. I don't even own a car." Right? So this is where they want to go, John.
Because of the condensed conditions he lives in, he doesn't need a car.
Right, right.
Not spread out like Fresno.
Not spread out like Fresno. This guy doesn't even, he's probably never even been to Fresno, okay? And so, how does he know what's best for Fresno? And that's what I'm talking about.
He's an elitist, is what you're saying.
Yeah, he's an elitist.
You called him an elitist, basically.
An elitist, yeah, exactly.
Okay. Caller, go ahead, you're on the air.
Hello, John, Steve, this is Doug Vegum.
Hey, Doug.
Good morning, guys, this morning. I've been listening to you.
Right on.
And Steve, you were right about the fact that you and I go back and we've worked on the same page on a lot of different issues.
Yes, sir.
And John, I want to thank you for staying on this issue. I think it's very important to this community. But Steve, when you started wandering over the fact that Doug has been inconsistent, this is where, about the fingers to the phone.
Mm-hmm.
And I had to correct you. I've been consistent. Matter of fact, I want to thank you for coming over to what I've been saying all these years. And when John brought up the plant being for the east side, he's more accurate than you are in the fact that you, in the general plan, put that east-side growth into an environmental assessment. Why did you even do that if you didn't plan to grow there? You shouldn't even environmentally assess it. That was a giant waste of money. I presume that's one of the reasons why you didn't support the general plan. But now that it's done, all that it takes in that growth to the east side is one thing, water. That's all it takes. And right now, you don't have water to support it. Bring the plant, you have water to support it. Now, I'm not against that, Steve.
Mm-hmm.
I have never been against that, and you know that. All that I'm for is the same thing now that you've been enlightened to. We gotta go find money, not on the backs of the people of Fresno. And until you do that, I would say get rid of that plant design because you haven't spent one less money in the $10 million that you are doing, you voted for $10 million to go design that plant. And they haven't missed one beat in the design of that plant. So no time has been lost, no shovel of earth to the ground has been lost, it's all been moving along. The only thing you can't do without the money is to go sell a one-third of a billion-dollar bond, and that's where this community is gonna suffer. You're gonna, you're gonna double the debts on the back of the people you represent, and that is plattely wrong. And I wish you would just vote no, just outright vote no. Matter of fact, abstention has got a kind of a connotation that you got a personal impact or a financial, you know, indiscretion. Actually, a no vote would be a better vote for this community.